Okay, I'll call this workshop to order. There's some feedback here that I don't know what we're gonna... In order to make this all work tonight, I think we have six computers and two cameras and several sets of mics.
Oh, you know what it is? I think it's coming in through your speaker.
The Zoom speaker so we can hear the Zoom participants talk.
So he needs to turn his speaker off on his microphone, his PC.
Oh, okay.
Do you know how to turn your mic off on your PC, Dan?
Um, I don't know. It's not doing it anymore. I muted myself on my...
Turn off the audio.
I didn't touch that.
Okay, okay. Let's try it.
Okay, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Wes, you wanna call the rule?
Sure. Councilman Dumas.
Here.
Councilman Elwood.
Present.
Councilman Graves.
Here.
Or Councilaki Graves, excuse me. Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we don't need a forum for a workshop, but for the record, we know at least who is here. Um, I'm gonna be the facilitator for most of it, but Ken is gonna start out here with a little review of what the statute is, and then I'm gonna go through the methodology that I use to determine the population distribution, and then the proposed word, boundaries and maps. Then we will have council discussion, although, you know, you can ask questions anytime you want. And then after the council is done with their questions, concerns, then we'll get public input, since we have one guest in the building. I assume most of the comments will come through Zoom. Just out of curiosity, how many Zoom participants do we have?
Fourteen, including the PCs in the room.
Okay. All right, um, so we don't need to approve the agenda. We can move on to Ken's part of the presentation, the statutes impacting.
Okay.
Linda, you have that on your PC?
Yeah, yeah.
If you would share that for us.
Hang on. Gotta get back to the Zoom thing.
You can use that one?
No, this is the projector. This is just showing what is Zoomed, we're just gonna see.
Oh, okay.
So this would be like what you see at home on Zoom. I just want to make sure it's in full screen mode so the document will be readable.
Oh, here are the controls. I see it. Okay. Well, there it is, right there. Gotcha. Now, let's see if that works. There we go.
Well, anyway, one of the issues that came up quite a few times during the campaign for incorporation was people not particularly liking the fact that we were electing councilmen by, uh...
At large.
At large. And so this has been one of our issues that we had said we would take care of, and as soon as we did become certified as a city of the second class, I started doing some research. And the only statue that I found that was really applicable to our situation is 1444-101, Creation of Wards, and this was in the Arkansas statutes under municipalities and down to cities of the second class. So, and it reads, "As soon as practical, after an incorporated town becomes a city of the second class, the city council shall form the city into the number of wards that to it will seem to best serve the interests of the cities. It shall be the duty of the council to see that each ward has a nearly equal population to each of the other wards that would best serve the interests of the taxpayers of the city." And there are some other ones about redistricting and such, but they're not... This one actually fits the situation we're in, and it's very simplistic. And the other thing that I got from the municipal league lawyer was, he gave me an example of an ordinance that they had, some city had used to present a redistricting, and it's just a kind of a guideline. I don't know, I don't think we need to go read it or anything, uh, but it's pretty simple.
You want me to display that?
Yeah, you can. And we talked to the... The only interface we have with, on this issue, would be with the county clerk who oversees, I understand it oversees, the county election commission, and so we, through her, we may end up talking to the election commission. But it's pretty straightforward, and you take the ordinance and your map and your legal description to the county clerk and hopefully...
That draft resolution, that you got that from the municipal league, right?
Right.
Yeah, that kind of is a little bit instructional, too, in that, you know, it says that once you, you know, once you decide what you want your ward boundaries to be, that you take the legal description and the, and the map.
Yeah.
And you give it to the county clerk and the election commission.
Yeah, I, we, do we need to read this or not?
Why don't you just go down to the "therefore" part?
"Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Holiday Island, that the ward redistricting plan is shown on the map which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, being is hereby adopted with said map to serve hereafter as the official ward map for the city of Holiday Island." And it says, "All previous ward map are here repealed. That a duly certified copy of such map shall be filed with the Carroll County Election Commission and filed in the office of the Carroll County Clerk." And it just, and then it goes on to say... So there again, it is telling us what, you know, what goes with the ordinance, and it goes to the county clerk, and evidently, if there's any review to it, she would do the review. And, but I don't know what, what, if we have no objections within the city, because all this says is you try to make an equal population distribution, and what Dan has come up with is, is there's no gerrymandering or funny, you know, part, I mean, the parcels are pretty self-contained. So I, I... The only question I had, and I tried to do some, a little bit of research yesterday when I was reading this stuff, and I couldn't find any, unless you've done some research, I couldn't find any court cases in Arkansas to interpret the term "nearly equal," and that bothers me a little bit, 'cause I don't have a big problem with that, other than they're like 10% different. And I don't know who makes that determination as the, uh, as to what nearly, or do we even know?
Did you find, did you find a 10%?
Well, I'm just looking at, I'm looking at his proposed, 721, 796. Isn't that 10% different?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know, like I said, I could not find a single case, of course, I don't have all the legal tools I used to have. I could not find a single case to try to interpret "nearly equal." And then the other concern I kind of had, and I, I don't even know how to address this concern, but physically, they're different size, too, and so if we have growth proportionate to the size of these things in a few years, we'd have to redistrict. Redistrict. But I, that's only my concern. Other than that, I don't know. Uh, all your, you know, Holiday Island's growth, though, is pretty concentrated in certain areas, and there's nothing happening in, or very little happening in something in the outlying area.
Proposed Ward Three?
Yeah.
And I, like, like you, I did a lot of looking as well, and I could not find any definition in statutes for what "nearly equal" meant.
I recall that when they were talking about congressional districts, when they were talking about nearly equal, it said within 10%.
Yeah. Uh, you know, the only thing you could do is you could, you could bring Ward One further into Ward Two, and then take Ward Two and take that unit one and two and add it. There's no way to add to Ward One. You'd have to borrow from Ward Two, and then Ward Two would be too small, so it's kinda like...
Yeah.
No, you could take that corner out and put Ward Two and take...
You don't know how many people are in that corner, though.
Yeah.
But I'll get into that when I, when I show you how I did this, but...
Um, I don't, I think it's, I think it's about as equitable as you want. I don't have a big problem with that, I'm just a little concerned about that definition.
The, uh...
And we do need them to be easily... Well, yeah, you have to get boundaries and be able to... You gotta have boundaries that are easy to define. Yeah, 'cause somebody's, the election commission has to go through and get, pick people out of it on it based on this map, and get them registered in the proper ward.
Yeah.
So what does the statute say about the, I think you read where it said, determine the number of wards as...
I, I read, I read a lot of things for different cities around here, and it goes all the way from two to five.
I talked to Mayor Tim McKinney from Berryville, who has been the mayor over there forever, and it, it comes down to the kind of the catchphrase in the statute that says, "What the city council determines is in the best interest of the taxpayers." So as an example, Berryville, the biggest city in Carroll County, has two wards.
Yeah.
And, you know, some have four, you know, some, so I mean, it...
Well, I guess where I'm a little bit concerned about three is two council members per ward, that's a council of six. Does, is the mayor a tiebreaker?
It doesn't matter, as long as you have two, two councilmen in each ward, it don't make any difference how many wards you got, you still got...
You're setting an even number. I know, well, what I'm saying... Two times two, or two times three, or two times four, you're setting an even number.
Uh, but I...
Are you limited to two per ward? Does Berryville only have four councilmen?
It's two per ward, that's the law.
That is the law, okay.
Uh, right. And I, I, my personal opinion, for the size of our community, I think six councilmen is very adequate.
Oh, I do, too. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
I think if you go larger, I mean, I, I think, you know, get up to 10, 15,000, you might want to add another one or something, but...
Or just, just simple and small.
That's too small.
I think that's, I think that's fine.
I, I...
There's no way to have two wards with two each, and then one at large. That doesn't fit the statute.
Uh, I think, I, I'm very comfortable with three wards.
I think three's fine. In the election of council members, we could, by, by ordinance, agree that one is elected by ward and one is elected at large, but it's still two per ward. So that's an option. So it still gives you an even number. Right. If we, I'm looking forward to the, not looking forward, looking in the future when we have the next election, and, and if we can't get two people from each ward to run, which may be a real issue here, then are we automatically allowed to have at large? Vacancies that we fill. We fill those by resolution.
And one, on the initial, uh, election, you, you, I think position number two is for two years, or position one in each ward. Four years, position number two is two years, so that you not, all the councilmen don't come up for election at the same time.
Yeah, basically, we'll be told what to do, and when it comes to the election, we'll be told what to do.
Yeah. Well, that's what the statute, there is a statute on that that says that, you know, you designate one position for two years.
Yeah, but like I said, we'll be told what to do, because the statute said that the mayor should, supposed to be elected for four years, and we were told, this time around, it's gonna be two.
Yeah. Well, that's...
It's because the clock started, I think, in 1966, or whatever it was.
Except that every city in Arkansas isn't on the same schedule, as far as electing mayors, so...
I think it's based on...
I think the local election commission has a little bit of...
I think that's based upon city of a second class and city of a first class.
No, that was based on the Carroll County.
Well, we're, we're a little bit jumping the gun worrying about the election.
But that's, I mean, there's, there just wasn't a lot of data out there to look at.
Out of 700 people in each ward, I would hope we could come up with, you know, a couple of people that would run for the city council.
And I, you know, the, when you, when we go to 2020 data, these might be more representative, too.
There's only... More representative of what?
How many people are actually in each ward.
There's only, the difference between the 2020 census and the 2010 census was 20 people.
What?
20 people. That's the difference between the 2020 census and the 2010 census.
Where did we get a figure?
So there, there, based on the census, there won't be a mass distribute redistribution of population in, in Holiday Island.
Well, okay. Well, you know, in my particular neighborhood, we, we're getting a lot, a lot of part-time people.
Registered voters, though.
They don't show up in the census.
They're not necessarily registered voters.
Well, no, they're not regi, I know they're not registered, they don't count.
No.
So they don't count in the population.
That's all that counts, essentially.
Okay, um, so I'm, I believe we're following the law. The law says that the city council has to set up the wards, and it doesn't really give you much guidance as to how to do that, so, you know, it kinda seemed like we were on our own. I did talk to GIS about six months ago, the Arkansas Geographical Information Service, and they said that they normally don't get involved in, um, setting up wards or, you know, providing any information on, on how to set up your wards. And everybody else, I think, set their wards up one time when they incorporated, and they never changed them, so...
I, I think that probably would, uh, the only other thing I would add to that, when I talked to County Dallas, she, they've got some kind of, I forgot what the name of it, it's Data something, some company.
Data Scout?
Data Scout is doing, she was saying, we, you know, we'd have to get them to come up, you know, do the population, but I don't see a need for that.
Okay. I had a conversation with Data Scout via email some time ago, and asked for what the charges and costs would be to extract data, and I had put together some formulas for fields that I'd want, trying to determine how many residents we had, because, just because there's a house on a street doesn't mean there's a resident there. So it was in the tune of a hundred and some dollars an hour kind of charges for them to do the, do the extract.
I, I don't think we need that. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out, because the county has used them for some, you know, for some...
It's, that's the database that you go to when you look at the assessor's office and research properties. Data Scout is the software that they're using.
But I, I, I myself would not think it would be necessary for what we're doing.
I had one comment about the ordinance. I think it needs to be worded a little bit differently and not use the word "redistricting."
Yeah, that's just a...
Oh, yeah, oh, that's, yeah.
That's just a sample that the municipal league sent.
I mean, surely...
By the time we're all done with this, we're gonna run it all by Justin Eichmann anyway, and get his blessing on it, make sure that we're doing everything legal.
It says redi, redistrict, that's what that one was.
Yeah.
Okay. But it was just, he gave me that because it showed the process and what, what, what all the information you had to give to county clerk.
Okay, uh, let's see. You wanna get out of that then, Linda?
Sure, what do you want next?
I'm gonna, can I drive it from here?
You can.
All right.
You can take it on.
And, uh, let's see, how do I share my screen? You have to, there you go. Uh, let's see, share screen. Host disabled participant screen sharing.
Well, I didn't, no, surely not.
Okay.
It says, uh, one participant can share at a time. Oh, I've got, I'll, I'll change the only host to all participants. There you go. That should do it.
Okay. Let's, first thing I want to share is... Oh, I get to minimize this.
I know one thing that's figured out, I think I'm gonna get a lot of here.
This is a, uh, this is how the, can you see that?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Say, let's see what?
Not yet.
It's not being shared yet.
Share screen, share...
There, it's coming up.
All right. This is, this is how the Census Department, or the Bureau of Census takes, well, I'm using it here, takes, um, takes the census. They divide up, why doesn't that show all of Holiday Island?
It's jumping around, 'cause you're, hit the minus, and it'll make the map larger.
Oh, yeah, but plus the minus is a Zoom.
Okay, it's just taking a while.
Yeah.
This is, this is a section of Holiday Island. You can see, on the left side is the island, and, uh, and the center is, is the mainland. The Census Bureau divides up the, you know, the country into blocks. And how they decide what the size and shape of a block should be, um, somebody probably knows, but it doesn't make much sense to me. But when you look at, when you get the actual data for the census, each one of these numbers, like 3048, will have a population in that area listed. 2038 will have a population for that little section. And you can see, 2038 in the center there is just a tiny little circle in the middle of nowhere, you know, in the middle of 2032. So why they decide to do that, it doesn't seem to have anything to do with population clusters or anything like that, but it sure is carved up in an unusual fashion. Back when we were, um, starting to work on, well, not even starting to work on incorporation, when Wes was trying to get turnback money for us, um, and the state treasury needed population estimates for Holiday Island, they took, we turned to GIS because the Census Bureau couldn't provide it. GIS took the, the raw data from the Census Bureau from 2010, which, this is a screenshot of 2010, and, um, and superimposed that onto the city map, and then determined by estimation what percentage of each block was in the city limits. So I think there's, there's probably, I'll have the data up here in a minute, but there's probably, you know, 150 of these little blocks. Some of them, most of them are 100% inside the city limits, some are not. The ones that weren't, they said that, you know, they estimated 60% was in, in the city limits, so they allocated 60% of the population in that block to the city. And, um, so basically, I did the same thing. I took the GIS data and I superimposed all these blocks, which was not an easy task, because I didn't have any software where I could just take a city map or a state, a Holiday Island street map and superimpose it over this census map here. So I had to go through here, looking at a street map and saying, "Well, this little, you know, box here, 2084, is shaped that way because they're following Hawk Drive," or something like that. And I could, you know, it took, it probably took me a week to do this, but I got it all figured out, where every block was, uh, you know, in Holiday Island, and that's what allowed me to do the population estimate. I never, I didn't divide any of these blocks into two wards, so I just kinda followed the boundaries of these blocks in such a way that it would, um, balance out the population. And when, Ken, when you said, um, "Well, you know, we could get this closer if we just took a little corner of this one and put it over here," that's exactly what I did, until I had it balanced pretty close. But some of these blocks might not have any people in them.
I know.
There may only be two or three people, so to move that block into a different ward accomplishes nothing as far as balancing out the population.
There's, there's, I'm sure there's several of those blocks that have nobody in them.
Yeah, or very few people.
Did you find that there is a street boundary around each block?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they basically bordered the streets. They, they didn't go through anybody's backyard or anything like that.
So if you wanted to get the boundaries a little closer to tighten up the population or move the population little by little from one ward to another to get more equalized populations, you could, in essence, go around those little street boundaries to carve out little areas to move into a different, the other district.
If you wanted to borrow from unit, from Ward One to go into Ward Two, you would have to follow that, you know, what I mapped out as being the ward boundary, which follows streets, and, uh, and see if there was a population cluster on the left side of that line that you could move to the right side of the line and balance it out more, and there weren't any.
Oh, okay.
There was, there was no, there was no good way of optimizing it any better than what...
That answers my question.
That I did.
I, I, I don't think you would gain a whole lot.
Yeah.
What, what is the major street boundary between one and two?
It's Franklin Township and Beaver Township.
But what is the street?
Oh, looks like Woodsdale. Oh, looks like Woodsdale.
Yeah, uh, between.
Can you tell us?
Between the wards?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get in, I'll get into that.
You will?
When I, when I get, when I pull up the ward map, um.
Oh, your description should have it.
Yeah, my, the description will have that. But I did wanna show you one thing. I used twenty ten data because that's what I had. That's the population estimate that GIS had done, and, uh, it was good, rock solid data. I'm not sure that there's twenty twenty data even available yet from the Census Bureau. Certainly there isn't a population estimate, um, available yet from the Census Bureau and...
They just announced this week that the congressional district data for redistricting, congressional districts will be out August fifteenth.
I don't know, I think it's gonna be set like September, Lee.
So I don't know if that would give you the blocks that you're looking for or not, but.
I don't, I don't, if there's only twenty people difference, I don't see we're making any big.
That won't help me.
Okay.
Because, um, because somebody, either GIS or the Census Bureau, would have to redo the estimate that GIS did with the twenty ten data because, let me show you what the twenty twenty census blocks look like. Totally different. They're numbered different. Well, let's see, yeah, there they are. Yeah, they're different, they're numbered different, so, um.
There it is.
Oh, you're right. Twenty thirty-two became twenty seventeen.
Yeah. So it, you know, so somebody would have to redo the population estimate to see, you know, which, which block is a hundred percent in the city and which isn't. And like I said earlier, the difference between the twenty twenty census and the twenty ten census was twenty people. So there, to me, there's no need to.
Why would they redraw all of them and renumber them? That is weird.
Because they're the government.
Let's add another layer of hypocrisy.
Hey, you ever hear, you ever hear, make one?
Make one?
So anyway, uh, that's the basis for my, uh, for my exercise here. I, I used the twenty ten census map. I used the twenty twenty, I mean, I used the, the GIS population estimate that was also based on twenty ten data, and, and I compared that to the Holiday Island street map to come up with what I thought was as close as we're gonna come to, you know, to a map.
Since there's only overall a twenty person difference, yeah.
And that gets us to, well, that's not what I wanted to do there. That gets us to the actual ward map here. Geographically, they're not the same size because of population clusters. Um, I tried to, um, I, I did try to, to just make north-south boundaries as closely as I could, um, so that, so that we didn't have a ward that was strictly carved out of the island, or a ward that was strictly carved out of people that live around the golf course or something like that, because we know that would be inherently under-representing people if, you know, if the wards heavily favored, um, you know, the densely, the more densely populated areas. So, um, Ward One, basically, I, I started the legal description here at, um, where, um, Pleasant Ridge Drive, right, right here, can you see the arrow on the map up there? Where Pleasant Ridge Drive intersects the city, uh, boundary. Um, and I, I started from there and I said, you just start going west, you follow the, the, the city boundaries all the way around to a point, now even though my line, uh, I had, you know, you have to excuse my map drawing skills, this was free-handed with a Sharpie. My line doesn't go directly north-south on this map, but if you take the, uh, the, the point of intersection of Shields and Bandy, um, right when you get on the island, and go straight north from there to the city boundaries, that would be the point at which Ward One boundary would start to go south. And then, let's see, da-da-da-da-da-da. From, from that point, you go south to, back to the intersection here of Shields and Bandy, to Woodsdale Drive, which is you go across the bridge and you're on Woodsdale, and then to Green Meadow Drive, to Larkspur, to Hillside Drive, to State Line Drive, which I think is around here, to Holiday Island Drive, and then Holiday Island Drive, back to Pleasant Ridge, and Pleasant Ridge back to the starting point. So that would be Ward One, and there would be seven hundred and twenty people plus or minus in that ward. Ward Two obviously has that same western boundary. The northern boundary is the, is the city limits. Um, let's see, how did this, starting at a point north of, uh, okay. So in my description of Ward Two, I restated all of this, getting back to Pleasant Ridge, and then, um.
Oh, see.
Follow the municipal bound, boundary, starting east, and follow it all the way down to Highway twenty-three, which is down here. And basically what you're doing is encompassing what's called parcel C, which is all of this area here, today green space, um, that's east of, um, like Cypress Point and some of those. And then, once you hit twenty-three, you take, you follow twenty-three to Holiday Island Drive, right here, and then you take Holiday Island Drive to Hawk Lane up here, take Hawk Lane down to Hawk Drive, and then take Hawk Drive down to Wild Turkey, Wild Turkey down to Valley, Valley, let's see, Valley to Pearl, which is right up here, and then Pearl to Starlight. Pearl, uh, let's see, this, this is Pearl, oh no, this is Pearl right here. This is where Starlight starts. You take Starlight up to Saturn Avenue, which I think is up here, and then you take Saturn back, let's see, you take Saturn to Skyview, which Saturn turns into Sky, Skyview at State Line.
Saturn to Summit to Skyview.
Uh, Saturn to Summit, yeah, to Skyview, and then Summit and Skyview are basically the same road. The name changes when you cross State Line. And then you take, uh, Skyview back to the State Line.
Yeah.
And that, that's Ward Two, and it would have seven hundred and forty people. Now, what units are represented in there? Uh, it looks like three, five, four, fifteen, eight, eleven, thirteen, ten, parts of ten anyway.
Am I reading it correctly, Dan, that the people on one side of Holiday Island Drive are in one unit in the, in Unit Two, and the people on the other side of Holiday Island Drive are in Unit Three?
Right.
Okay.
And I think you'd find that in.
You'll find it on several of the.
Any city you live in, that they're gonna follow a street to, that the wards are not gonna run a ward boundary through people's backyards. Um, then for Ward Three, it's pretty simple, like, I mean, it's the same boundary as Ward Two with the exception of when you get to twenty-three, you go south, you, you just follow basically the city boundary all the way around. Uh, I think this, this goes all the way around the bluffs. There's a, an undeveloped parcel back here, and then, uh, this goes around behind Wolf Wellness. It hits twenty-three again, and then you take twenty-three back, um, back to the city limits. I mean, the Highway twenty-three is the city limits again for a while.
So that boundary doesn't follow the street that goes behind the Wolf Wellness property and the fire station property?
Right.
Okay.
Right. It follows the city boundary.
The boundary.
Yeah. And then, you know, from that point, it just follows the city boundary all the way back to the State Line. And that would be Ward Three, and that has seven hundred and ninety-six people in it.
So we're, we're actually talking, these are, this is population estimates.
Right.
So we don't know how many registered voters would be in each ward.
It doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't matter.
It's based on population, not on registered voters.
But they, I mean, again, like, I just taking our, our area, we ended up with a lot of part-time people, so they, they would not been, they would not be part of the census.
Right.
That's true. So, and I don't know, that, that seems to be common in the whole area. I know I talked to the people out in, out on Beaver Lake there, and they're getting a lot of non-resident owners.
Mm-hmm.
Then I guess that's why I was so surprised that the population only went up twenty. That and how bad was the twenty twenty census, I'm not too sure.
Well, you know, there weren't, there just weren't a whole lot of new houses constructed in the last ten years either.
Yeah, but there are this year.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, only relative to what's been going on. I mean, when I built my house that year, there was a hundred houses built on Holiday Island, and that was several years in a row, ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-five, ninety-two to ninety-five, there were a lot of construction.
Okay. Dan, can I ask what might be a dumb question, but I'm, I'm a little confused. Uh, I called up the twenty ten census figures for Holiday Island, and it, it gives me a figure of twenty-three fifty-three. Would the, would the census area have been different in twenty ten?
That's the, that's the Holiday Island census designated area.
Okay.
Not the city of Holiday Island.
Okay.
The twenty-two sixty that were technically, or officially our city population is based on what, what GIS did.
Okay.
Estimating, you know, what percent of a census block was in and out of the city.
Yes, that's kinda like the voting, voter registration that we got, you know, for Holiday Island, you know, we had a lot of people on there that weren't in Holiday Island.
And the main difference is all the people living along one eighty-seven, those were in the census place that was called Holiday Island but aren't in our city.
And a few, I think, on the northwest too, 'cause I think it followed twenty-three all the way to the State Line.
Yeah.
And, uh, so all the people that lived along County Line Road up there and stuff would have been in our numbers. So I, I think twenty-two sixty is the.
Is reasonable.
Is a reasonable estimate for now. You know, if we, if we see a lot of growth, you know, we, we can always ask for a, you know, we can always have a special census done, but I would caution people, we do not wanna be twenty-five hundred and one people, a population.
Yeah.
Because that puts us over the bump, uh, hump on, uh, being a city of the first class.
That's not an automatic jump though, as I recall. You have to ask for that.
I don't think so.
I think they can make it, make you one.
Okay.
I think, uh, I think the, the governor and the secretary of state would make that determination based on census numbers and tell you what classification you are.
Okay.
And I, I don't know that, I know that if you're a city of the second class, you can petition to be a city of the first class. I've never seen or heard of it going the other way, of saying, uh, yeah, we got twenty-six hundred people, but we're not quite ready to be a city of the first class, so.
Yeah, that carries a lot of additional responsibilities.
Yep, and you have to have a police department and all kinds of stuff.
I have a question, if I can.
Sure.
Uh, do you think these ward boundaries fairly represent the citizens of Holiday Island? And does it fairly represent the taxpayers of Holiday Island? Thank you.
It, in my opinion, it does. I mean, from what I know about Holiday Island, you know, I tried to, I tried to, um, avoid the old, um, problem of people thinking that they're underrepresented because they live in a certain area of the, uh, of the community, or people thinking that, that we're, you know, spending too much on certain areas and, and stuff like that. That's why each one of these wards has, has, um, well, Ward One, uh, Ward One, there wasn't much I could do as far as making sure that there were large undeveloped acreages or, you know, large green spaces or anything like that. Um, it, it's just the nature of the way it lays out that, that, um...
I don't, I don't know.
But, but, you know, it's not just the island, it's all the people that live, you know, down around Woodsdale, down on Blue Water, you know, up on Larkspur, you know, and up in there. So, you know, it's, I, I think it's fairly representative. Ward Two and Ward Three are a, um, a mixture of, of, um, you know, the, the, the less sparsely populated, you know, heavily wooded areas, and some of the more populated areas.
Indian Hills is in three, right?
Indian Hills is in three. The only thing that, I, I guess, you know, Ward Two has nothing of what you would consider to be commercial. Ward Three has, you know, has the, the bluffs, you know, the, the, the shopping center, and, you know, Ward One has the district office and, you know, there's some non-residential stuff down there. Ward Two is, is almost purely residential, but I don't know how we would divide the community up any differently to, to deal with that.
Since it's about voting, I don't think that matters if there's commercial or not commercial.
Mm-hmm.
It's more about residents voting.
And having two representatives for each ward.
Well, uh, I mean, we hadn't gotten to the, way too early of the mechanics of the election, but, but wouldn't it, the, all the, even there be a position one, position two in each ward, but it would be at-large voting, right?
No, you have to, you have to be a member, you have to be a resident of the ward, and only the residents in that ward can vote for that ward.
And that's state law?
Mm-hmm.
I?
Yeah.
I'm questioning that. I thought I read that that is not necessarily the case.
No.
That you, that the, the council members have to be from the ward, but you could have an at-large election.
That's how it is in Oklahoma.
We can set it up that way.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But by default, it's not.
But you, it, you can set, you can choose to set it up that way.
To me, that, that makes sense. I mean, then you, you don't get into like, well, there's no commerce. I mean, then you don't get into, like, well, there's no commercial in Ward Two, or, you know? Ward Three has the, all the commercials. Just have positions one and two, and have everybody...
And everybody in the whole city gets to vote for each councilman.
Yeah, you have, whatever position you are in the ward, you have to live in that ward, but the voting is at-large over the entire city.
All the criticism I've heard of anything we've done has been about at-larges. They want people from their...
Maryland, Maryland.
That's my own home, but you can have... My, my personal opinion is that it would be better to not have the election at-large, because it's conceivable that Ward Three would have a ringer from, you know, that Ward One, you know, Ward One, let's say, Ward One goes out into Ward Three and solicits a candidate to run for, for...
Ward One.
Ward One, and then they all vote for him to make sure that he gets elected. I, you know, I see the risk in that happening, whereas if only people in the ward, that live in the ward can vote for their council member, it would seem more fair.
I, I assumed that's where we were going. And I think that's what the majority of the people living there, I mean, that's been the criticism of the B.O.C. membership forever, you know? And, I mean, you would get, you know, you'd get around it somewhat, because the people that, you know, you're putting out as candidates have to live there, but by going to an at-large, I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see why we have to go through the Election Commission with all this crap if you're not gonna assign the voters to a ward.
Well, you have to set up wards regardless.
Well, I know, but there's no point in assigning a voter to a ward if they're gonna, everything's at-large, all the voting's at-large.
Well, you have to do that to create the wards.
But you don't, you know, it does nothing...
So the candidates are coming from particular wards?
I mean, that'd be pretty easy to determine, that you wouldn't have to bother the Election Commission about it.
Well, yeah, you do.
No.
Because your residence has to fall within a given ward.
Only the candidate.
Yeah. So you still have to draw a boundary.
Right, so they have to know...
Draw boundaries, but you don't have to worry about too much.
How would you do it?
The population is in each ward.
Does that make any difference?
Well, you only have to worry about the population, so you have them of equal size. I mean, one...
I don't like the idea.
But we can, we can poll the, we can poll other cities and see if they, if they have at-large elections, but I bet they don't.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Maybe. I think you're gonna run into a lot of opposition, is what the, my personal opinion.
Well, somebody would need to volunteer to do some research to see if, if having at-large elections is an option.
I'd try and find it.
No, you're too adamant against it. We need to, neutral party, "I shouldn't do it, and you shouldn't do it."
Right. The statutes, you can't change the statutes, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Well, there's not a statute, if you, if people can change it, there may be more than you know.
I mean, we don't know that the statute allows it.
What's the question?
Well, then, we said it in, that we can set it up how we want to.
Wards, council, you know, people, councilmen...
Yes, it does.
Wards can be elected at-large.
In fourteen forty-two, two oh six, Section C is a sample for filling out your petition for nomination, and it states, "For at-large candidates for council members of a ward in a city of the first class or cities of the second class, the nominating petitions shall be signed by a qualified elector of the city in the following manner: And you testify that you are living in a certain ward, and you want to run for a certain position in that ward." So we can do it at-large, but we have to set it up.
I imagine we can find out from municipal league what cities or how many cities do this, or don't do it.
Yeah, because before we have the election, or before it's time to file for the election...
We would have...
We'll probably have to have a informational session that show people, you know, if you're interested in running, this is what you'd have to do. And I don't know at what point we have to tell who if we're gonna have elections by ward or elections at-large.
I would...
Or we could find out from municipal league on that, too.
I would not think, I don't know, if there are election, all, everything you would have would then be at-large. You would have, you know, you wouldn't have any election by a ward.
But you would have representation in each ward.
I understand.
And you avoid the, of getting someone elected that ignores, I mean, I can see it happened, that you get a councilman that, you know, ignores the good of the city, and if you've got people that are elected at-large, that with the entire city in mind, I mean, it just cuts down a lot of problems. Other states have done it successfully.
Well, we'll see what the majority of other cities do, and we'll do what everybody else thinks is best, I guess.
Where'd you find that?
Statute fourteen forty-two, two oh six, municipal elections, nominating petitions. Fourteen forty-two, two oh six.
I, in all the statutes I read, I didn't, I didn't see whether they were at large. It might be, I don't know, would there be something about that in that big manual they gave us on, you know, candidacy?
I don't know, but I mean, you just read the statute.
Yeah, I know. That was city of the first or second?
Both.
It's government municipalities generally, and then it's elections, so there's no, it talks about cities of the first class and cities of the second class.
Which are the only ones that have wards.
That's correct.
All right, well, that's on the to-do list before we get to the point of elections.
It should really have nothing to do with us, you know, doing ordinance on the boundaries.
No, I mean, we still need to set up the wards.
Yeah.
Are, do we have any participants with their hands raised that would like to...
Are you ready for the public discussion?
Yeah.
Might ask the room, too, if they want, if they're members in the room.
Any questions?
The only question I would have would be...
You need to go to the microphone up here, and we want him to state his name and address for the record.
For the record, it, you know, doesn't hurt, I don't know that it's required, but...
My name's Brandon Odom, address is seven C State Line. My question would be, the map that we're looking at now, is this post-census or pre-census?
It's based on the twenty-ten census.
Okay.
Which is the only census that we have population estimates for at this point. The, whether it was the twenty-ten census or the twenty-twenty census, at the time the census was being taken, Holiday Island was not a city yet.
Correct.
So we didn't have any city boundaries, so the Arkansas Geographical Information Service took the twenty-ten census data and superimposed all the census blocks on the city boundaries, and did a population estimate as to how many of the people in the census area were inside the city and how many were outside the city. If we were going to use twenty-twenty census data, we would have to get somebody to do that same population estimate again, and I'm not sure we have time to get that done, because the Census Bureau isn't providing that data yet.
Right.
And, and we said earlier in the meeting before you got here, there's all, the difference between the twenty-twenty census and the twenty-ten census relative to Holiday Island was only twenty people, so we don't really think that there's a big difference between the, you know, the distribution of population in Holiday Island.
With new builds and recent additions to the community at this year alone, is that something that could be potentially rezoned later on and moved, the wards altered?
We, yeah, we can change the ward boundaries, really, anytime we want to.
Okay.
If we come up with better data and a reason to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I shouldn't say anytime we want to.
Right.
There's a time limit before an election that you have to have things nailed down so that the Election Commission knows what to do.
They want you to stop sharing your screen so that we can see the speaker talk. Sorry.
We'll be that way.
Audience wants to see Brandon.
No one wants to see me.
And I tried to do it, and I can't take it off.
You can't take it away from him?
No.
No, that's not what we want. Stop sharing, right there.
Techno.
Okay, okay.
Somehow you have to make that...
There we go.
Wave at everybody, Brandon.
Now wave, Brandon.
Okay.
Look at the questions.
A new star is born.
You're not seeing it, but there's about a three-second time delay between what you do and what shows up on the screen.
I think that answered the questions.
Okay.
Won't we have to wait until we have the twenty-twenty data before we finalize this?
The wards?
Yeah.
Depends on how much time we have.
But the estimate being twenty difference is probably not significant enough to cause a change. I mean, if all twenty were in one ward, if they were all in Ward Three, it might be outside the near ten percent thing, but if they're in Ward One or Two, it'll help balance that total. So, you know.
Well, you know, but like I said earlier, before we, before we go to the county with all of this, you know, we're gonna run it by our city attorney and get his opinion on it. He'll look at the statutes and say if what we did is right, and he'll look for precedents and Attorney General's opinions and all that good stuff. But kind of the way I see this is, we give it our best shot. If somebody doesn't like it, they can, they can, you know, take action to...
But it's based on the most recent legitimate data. I mean, we don't have any other data.
It's the most recent data that we have.
Yeah.
I can't see, the only thing, you know, that I would say, you know, is, when I, when I talked to Connie Dawson, I know you've had conversations, you know, with that initial one, you know, she didn't think we could do anything until we got the twenty-twenty data, and, but since if you have information that it was only a twenty-person difference, I would think that would not...
I have no legal opinion that says that I can use twenty-ten data, so it, you know, we may have to, you know, I may have to go through this whole exercise again, but I don't think, I don't think it's gonna...
There's nothing in the statutes that tells you what you're gonna use for, what your population is for these wards.
We have those chat comments when you're ready.
Do I, can I see the chat comment?
Yeah. You can read it, or I can read it.
Establishment of three wards, how will this impact the current sitting board? Not knowing where everyone lives, will someone lose their position on the board?
We all have to rerun.
We have, all of our terms expired.
It doesn't make any difference.
Let me read the whole, let me read the whole thing.
Yeah, that's true.
If a renter is registered to vote in Holiday Island, then they are eligible to run for the position in the ward? Question mark, yes. They are, if they're, if they're a registered voter and they live in a particular ward, they can run for council member in that ward. A correction to this board, there are corner lots in Ward Two, and the campground appears to be in Ward Two, that are commercial lots, business. Please take down the map, the mayor's screen inter... Oh, okay. So, yes, that, the, the setting up the wards is, you know, will impact the current board, because everybody here was elected for two years. So everybody on the, on the current city council will be running for reelection if they choose to run for reelection. We will have a new election, and we, you know, anybody that wants to can run for city council in their particular ward.
Or mayor.
Or mayor, please.
I think, I don't know, did you end up two years also, right?
Yes.
Everybody was two years.
And normally, in the last election in a city of the second class, the clerks would have been a four-year term, but I was elected to a two-year term. So I'll, if I, you know, decide to run again, it would be for another two-year term until the four-year, that period, which would be the normal time to elect.
I thought twenty-twenty-two is a normal four-year, is what they explained it.
Yeah, I thought that's when the four-year term starts.
Yeah.
It would have started in twenty. They're different. The laws, the law that covers that, you go clear back like to the sixties or so, and it sets the starting point of the four-year terms.
Well, I mean, the statute said that, you know, that the mayor and the, and the recorded treasurer were, clerk was four years. It had to be found out, well, that's not true, because of off-year cycling, which...
Well, see, I think in a town, I always, I think it's because a town has a different cycle than a city.
Right.
Oh, sure. That's what changed it, isn't it?
That's what I thought it was.
Or city of the second class. New rules. Okay.
I don't know, I kinda like Dan, and they'll tell us what...
Yeah, they'll tell us what we're running for. Are there any other questions, or hand raised?
You need to raise your hand if you want to talk out in Zoom later. If you have any comments, now's the time to raise your hand, or unmute yourself and speak up, one or the other.
Then what, what do you see our timeline on this being, then, Dan?
Well, my takeaway is that the first thing I'm gonna do is confirm whether or not the twenty-ten data is good enough, or if we are going to be forced to use twenty-twenty data. If we're gonna be forced to use twenty-twenty data, then I need to find out who's gonna provide the population estimate and when, if it's gonna be G.I.S. or if it's gonna be the Census Bureau. To my knowledge, the, the department at the Census Bureau that does population estimates is still shut down yet, you know, they shut down...
See, they, they're... See, they, they're so far behind, there's no telling when those numbers are gonna come out.
They said February originally.
Well, yeah, but they, they, when the October deadline to, for the count to end, I mean, there was a significant number they had needed, I mean, they're like forty percent.
But I, you know, I've heard.
Return.
Yeah, but I've heard that they're going to furnish data to the counties and states for redistricting in this August, September timeframe, so I don't know what.
Yeah, but they're not changing county and county boundaries and stuff like that. They don't need a population estimate. Their data is good. We need a population estimate because we didn't have city boundaries established when the census was taken, in twenty-ten or in twenty-twenty. So somebody has to provide a population estimate. In, after the twenty-ten census, if I remember correctly, the department that provides population estimates from the Census Bureau wasn't reactivated until twenty-thirteen. So, um, my guess is we'll have to, we'll have to ask GIS to do it again.
Wouldn't you assume since you, you were showing us the geoid map, um, and how it was different from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty? So wouldn't you assume since the twenty-twenty had populations associated with each of those geoids that that's gonna be available, I mean, relatively soon?
Yeah.
For the twenty-twenty?
But they're redrawn, different shapes.
I know, but you'd have to try to get those in the boundaries somehow.
All it means, all it means is that, you know, two entities have to do something. One entity has to provide a population estimate. They have to take all those, those little geographical blocks with the population and they have to estimate what percent is in the city limits. GIS can do that if the Census Bureau, um, won't, but I haven't asked them to do it. And then secondly, because all of those little circles and everything are shaped different now, it's a whole new Rorschach test.
Right.
And, uh, so I have to take that and go through the whole exercise like I did before and try to superimpose those shapes on the city map to see what, what they bounder, but what, you know, what boundary, uh, they have, what, you know, what street creates the boundaries on those blocks. And then come up with a new population distribution.
You essentially have to do the same thing you did with the twenty-ten data.
Right, right. So the line may not look exactly the same. In, you know, in general, it's gonna look the same, but the shape may be slightly different because they changed the little shape of that block.
So.
You know, instead of following valley, they may have followed wild turkey a little further or something.
Well, I'm saying, all I was trying to make the point of was that there will be a population to go with each of those little doohickeys.
Right, right. You know, it, it's all possible, you know, just that it's, it's gonna be a, a lot of extra work for twenty people.
Uh, the issue on whether the cons, councilman will be elected within the ward or at-large, is that something then that would, that's not part of the setting up the wards, that would be a separate issue that we would have to write an ordinance on?
Correct.
If we want it to be something different than what the law will otherwise dictate, we would have to pass.
I would, yeah. I don't know what the law, I, I come across what the law dictates myself.
I want a discussion on it at least.
Well, yeah, but I.
Well, I mean, read it again to him, the statute.
Well, what I was reading was the nomination-election form of how it reads for, and it was talking about elected at-large in cities that have wards. There's a, there's a suggested form for that. So it must be permitted because they have an example of what your nomination-election, election nomination petition should look like.
So there's, there's gotta be a statute somewhere that tells you. I know back when we were talking about, you know, setting this thing up way back when we were in the petitioning process, it came, you know, came up with the thing about, you know, that the two, two years and four years thing, and it's, and, and it explained there, and I'll try to find that again, but, uh, where it said that, you know, one, you know, position one or you designate position, which position would be for two years and which would be four. So, uh, but I don't remember seeing anything about the election at-large, so it's gotta be somewhere. Okay.
So then, once, once the question is answered on whether we can use twenty-ten data or not, um, whatever work results from that, once all that is done and, and we have new ward boundaries, then, um, I will, I will generate a new boundary description like I did here and send that to GIS. Even though they don't get involved, according to the person I talked to, they don't get involved in setting up wards, in other words, telling you how many people, you know, what your ward boundaries should be in order to divide your people up, they don't provide that service. But I think if I send them a description of the ward boundaries, they will generate a map for me because the proposed ordinance referred to a certified map.
Okay.
So it can't be my, it can't be an iPhone picture of my hand-drawn ward map.
To answer the, the question about where it's defined in statutes for governments of cities of the second class, it's fourteen forty-four, one oh three.
That's, that's the one that says we have to have an ordinance.
No, it talks about, it talks about the election, it's the election of council members is the title.
Okay.
So there's a lot of different information in it, it's a long one. Fourteen forty-four, one oh three.
Thanks.
Well, uh, are we going to make that part of our next regular meeting or we gotta wait?
We don't.
It doesn't have to be the next meeting, no.
We have some time for that.
Yeah.
I may have some answers on the questions that we have here by the next meeting, but.
And we'll wanna do the research with Muni League on what other cities are doing, too, before we do that.
Yeah. I, I would take some, I would take some time to look at it from that angle. Like I say, I, I remember reading some statutes on the alternating time cycles, so it should be in one of those.
What was that code again?
Fourteen forty-four, one oh three.
All right, is there anything more to contribute here? We don't have any more questions or anything? I don't think I get a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, I've got a new chat here. They say they don't have the raised hand thing.
They can't find it.
Rebecca thanks you for answering her question. So if anyone else has any questions out there on Zoom, just unmute yourself and speak up. Otherwise, we'll probably move on, right?
Same, same. Census.gov, their timeline for releasing redistricting data is September thirtieth this year, is when they intend to have redistricting data available publicly. But as for supplying it to states and municipalities, they started doing that February twelfth this year.
Well, for the last of this year.
And it's on census.gov.
Well, the congressional redistricting data is out there because they've already figured out that, you know, Texas gets two more and California gets two less and stuff like that, so.
And a lot of that's gerrymandered.
Well, I don't know if you can gerrymander a state, but, uh, it's determining how many representatives you're authorized based on population and California lost population, so.
Well, you, have you ever seen the, the state representative in the congregate congressional?
Oh, yeah, no. Scary man, a little bit. Even in your home state.
Okay, um.
Yeah, they wouldn't do that.
If there's nothing else, I think I'm going to adjourn. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.